Good evening. We'll call to order tonight's Village of Vicksburg Brownfield Board Regular In Person Meeting, June 27, 2022. Will take attendance, Christian?
Trustee Olson?
Here.
Trustee Wagner?
Here.
Trustee Reister?
Here.
Trustee Merrill?
Here.
Trustee, Board Member DeBruin?
Here.
President Pro Tem Keller?
Here.
President Brisket?
Here. We have an agenda in front of us tonight. Was there any corrections by staff, any additions?
No, not on the Brownfield, sir, no.
Well, it'll take us to citizens' comments.
Would be one correction is the minutes will be at the, excuse me, the September meeting, which will include March in tonight's minutes.
I move as amended.
Trustee Wagner, I support.
I have a motion by trustee Keller, seconded by trustee Wagner. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So we have an agenda in front of us. We have the 2021 full year budget amendments and approval of administration expense. Citizens, citizens' comments. I don't think we're online, so...
No, we did not set up a hybrid. It was noticed in that for public, and it was noticed that we would be only in person for the Brownfield portion.
Yeah, seeing nobody in the audience, so we'll move on. The minutes, approval of the minutes will be moved to our September meeting. So that puts us at the 2021, 2022 full year budget amendments.
Yeah, the budget amendments provided in tonight's pocket, those are two movements, both sections of revenue for the Village of Vicksburg and Schoolcraft came over our June 2021 estimates. Village of Vicksburg was an additional $2,544.31, and Schoolcraft was an additional $1,573.38. So those are the two amendments in front of the board tonight, and we're looking, staff's recommending a motion, support, and a roll call vote on the approval of those amendments. Be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have questions for staff on this? Seems like a pretty positive cut. So the staff is asking us to approve the administration expense and budget amendments as presented.
We'll need a motion and a support and a roll call vote on the amendments first, and then we'll do the administrative.
Trustee Wagner will make the motion. We approve the transfer of the administrative expense from the Brownfield to the general fund.
Trustee Olson, my second.
Yeah, I think we want to just address the budget.
I don't think, yeah, the amendments first, and I don't think we've done that approval process yet, and then we'll move into the expenditure of the $4,000. Then we'll move to the '22, '23 fiscal year.
Can we just amend my motion to include that?
The motion will be to approve the two amendments for the Brownfield 2021, 2022 fiscal year. That'll be the only item contained in that motion.
And I will make that motion.
Trustee Reister, second.
Motion made by trustee Wagner, seconded by trustee Reister. We'll do a roll call, please, Christian.
Board Member DeBruin?
Yes.
Board Member Merrill?
Yes.
Board Member Olson?
Yes.
Board Member Wagner?
Yes.
Board Member Reister?
Yes.
Board Member Keller?
Yes.
President Brisket?
Yes. Motion passes. So we'll move on to the approval of the administration expense.
This is an expense that we do each year. It covers staff's time in the involvement in the Brownfield. You might remember, we did have some commitment to the Prairie Street address when we looked at this and other movements. So it's an approval that authorizes us to move the Brownfield money into the general fund revenue category.
Any questions of staff?
I just had one. Is that about the same that we transferred in previous years?
Yes, it's the same amount. Quite sure we had more than that probably in staff time, but we just keep it consistent each year.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? That section of money movement?
Yeah, this is what...
Administration.
So we're talking about the $6,500?
No, I'm talking about a motion, support, roll call, vote on approval of expenditures of $4,000, transfer from Brownfield Fund to the general fund, item B.
Okay, thank you.
Well, we have a request for staff to approve the administration expense.
Move as submitted.
All support.
Motion made by trustee Keller, supported by trustee Wagner. We'll take a roll call vote, please.
Board Member Merrill?
Yes.
Board Member Reister?
Yes.
Board Member DeBruin?
Yes.
Board Member Wagner?
Yes.
Board Member Olson?
Yes.
Board Member Keller?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries.
Before the Brownfield Board tonight, you have the proposed 2022, 2023 budget as it relates to the Brownfield Redevelopment Fund. Right now, we're estimating revenues in that fiscal year to be $31,000, and expenses associated with legal advice at $10,000, professional services at $1,000, the accounting services, which is specific to the audit, at $1,500, and then the administrative services again at $4,000. So we have a total of $16,500 in expenses and revenues at $31,000.
Trustee Wagner, I'll move that we approve the submitted proposed 2022, 2023 fiscal year Brownfield budget estimate.
Do we have support?
Merrill, supporting.
Motion made by Board Member Wagner, seconded by Board Member Merrill. We'll do a roll call, please, Christian.
Board Member Reister?
Yes.
Board Member DeBruin?
Yes.
Board Member Olson?
Yes.
Board Member Merrill?
Yes.
Board Member Wagner?
Yes.
Board Member Keller?
Yes.
President Brisket?
Yes. Motion carries, and village manager has a village update.
Yes, I provide the opportunity to ask any questions about village-related matters that any of the board members have. Updates, infrastructure project is complete. There are three different trees that are showing stress, and I believe the landscape nursery company will be in this week to correct or look at and give advice to those areas. The retaining area down by Clark Park will be completed, and then we'll be able to hopefully get the screening away, the black screening from the road and park side, and at least open up the walkway, the boardwalk, as we reported last week will be closed for at least 45 days till we get a plan. But be happy to answer any other questions on...
I have one question. I don't understand why there is black. It looks like plastic coming up out of the grates, the sewer. What is that for?
That's to keep, like, the dirt that was due to the large trucks in that associated with the infrastructure project, to try to keep as much debris from entering the storm system as we possibly could.
Okay, and those will be removed, then?
Right, when we do the last punch-ticket item list.
Thank you.
What trees are showing the distress you're talking about, Jim?
Two in front of Family Fair and one in front of Hot Flash Pottery on Main Street.
I was thinking the tree in front of Clark Park.
Those are watered four times a week by DPW, but...
That's good to hear.
Jim, what about the one down here on V that we lost? About a third of that one.
That's not a village tree. That's not in the village limits. We did take care of it due to the fact it fell on our street, but the tree would be the responsibility of the room.
Okay, thank you.
There's one more tree by the parking lot south, the big parking lot south. There's a tree that's kind of got a crack going through it, vertical, and it probably won't survive. I've been watering it, but...
Where is that at?
It's west of Taco Bob's on Washington Street.
Okay.
And then they left this wire cage on one of the trees that, as the roots expand, it will kill the tree, and that's outside of the old jail.
Yeah, they're responsible for it, so if the tree dies, they'll be responsible to replace it.
It might take a couple of years, so then we'll be out.
Any other questions for staff? So we'll do member comments, and Member Olson?
Nothing right now, thank you.
Member Wagner?
None, thank you, Tim.
Member Reister?
None, thank you.
Member DeBruin?
All set.
Member Merrill?
Set.
Member Carl?
All good.
Well, then we'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Good evening, Vicksburg. Welcome to tonight's Village Council regular session. Tonight's Monday, June 27, 2022.
And we'll call this meeting to order. We'll say the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll just take a moment of silence before we get this meeting underway. Christian, would you take roll call, please?
Trustee Olson?
Here.
Trustee Wagner?
Here.
Trustee Reister?
Here.
Trustee Merrill?
Here.
President Pro Tem Keller?
Here.
President Brisket?
Here. Rick Holmes is excused tonight. He's having some personal medical issues attended to. We have an agenda in front of us. We have three additions tonight. We want to add under council action items, or where do we want to put these at?
Yes, under, we're going to, agenda items 10B and C are actually just part of the budget presentations. They don't need to be standalone. So 10B will become approval of the fourth quarter budget amendments and approval of $4,000 transfer from Brownfield to general fund related to administrative expenses. We would add 10G, which would be awarding the master plan contract to McKenna, of which I had provided previously to the financial committee, and will provide the documents to the other four council members as well.
So we'll make that H, because G is the adoption of the budget proposal.
So B and C will be included with G.
I got you. So we have a revised agenda in front of us tonight. I hear a motion to move to accept the agenda as...
I approve as amended.
Trustee Wagner, I support.
Motion made by trustee Keller, supported by trustee Wagner. We'll do a roll call, please.
Trustee Merrill?
Yes.
Trustee Olson?
Yes.
Trustee Reister?
Yes.
Trustee Wagner?
Yes.
President Pro Tem Keller?
Yes.
President Brisket?
Yes. So we have an agenda in front of us, a very full one for the evening. Do we have any scheduled appearances, Jim, or anyone online?
No, sir.
Thank you for that. Thank you for that. And no public officials?
No, sir.
This is a time for Citizens' Comments, for Agenda Items only. Are there anyone online that wish to speak?
No, sir.
So we have a general consent agenda. Our minutes from our regular council meeting, June 20, 2022. Warrant reports in the amount of $26,754.22. Event requests, none, and correspondence was none. Do you hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Merrill here making a motion to approve the general consent agenda.
Trustee Wagner has support.
Motion made by Trustee Merrill, seconded by Trustee Wagner. We'll do a roll call, please, Kristen.
Trustee Reister.
Yes.
Trustee Olson.
Yes.
Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
President Pro Tem Keller.
Yes.
President Brithby.
Yes. Consent agenda's been approved, so we have item number 10, Village Council Action Items. And first on the list is Parks and Rec 2022 to 2023 for your budget?
Yes, sir. And we like to highlight Parks and Rec as it has, excuse me, been a priority of this council and well documented within the Master and Parks and Rec Plan. Highlights what's contained in the next fiscal year budget are $138,700 committed to the Parks and Rec program. We had a little bit of a hiccup that we did report last week on the Clark Park Observation Deck. That's now become a priority within the 2022-23 fiscal year. And we originally said 45 days, but we're asking for a full 60, which basically gets us to our August meeting, where we'll plan on making a presentation with the options and recommendations to that section of the park. One of the exciting things I'm looking forward to is the Village of Vicksburg sponsoring, for the first time, two Movies in the Park Nights for families of our community, which would be held out at the Historic Village Pavilion. The Parks and Rec, Chad Kissinger and Wendy Fields have really done a nice job on this. So we've placed money in the budget that rents the equipment, pays anything that we might need to pay to show a first-rate movie or in that. Also, on the Historic Village, multiple items in building maintenance and update. One of the key are this fall prior to the Historic Festival, to have the Pavilion completely restained, which will help in the maintenance and that. And also, the Historic Society has requested gutters to be put up on some of the buildings. And we've solicited quotes from a couple companies and going to take that on. On, if council's memory, two years ago, we had set an initial leasing charge at $12,500. Last year, we brought it down to $10,500, and this year, we're recommending that to be $10,000 for the fiscal year. So it's, watching utility charges in that, but we feel that's a fair representation of what cost we'll have in there. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. Some other things that we're looking at in the recreational area is still disc golf hole signs. We've had that for a year. We did recently, six weeks ago, had some artwork sent to us, but it doesn't work in today's technology. So we're really just kind of pushing that money forward, but we think it would be a good way to have people play the disc golf park. And if there's a sign, proper QR codes, drive them to downtown to enjoy the businesses and atmosphere that we have in downtown Vicksburg. It was nice earlier this evening at Parks and Rec, Wendy Fields relayed where she was up in Zeeland and bumped into an individual who immediately, when she said she lived in Vicksburg, talked about the disc golf park and how they drive down multiple times this summer to enjoy it. So that was nice to hear. You can see, we're going to place new ground covering under the play structure at Sunset Lake Beach and add some border and Clark Park to where the Portage John is. So I'll be happy to answer anything specific to Parks and Rec. It is in the overall budget, but each year, we, as we do in police and DPW office staffing, we like to highlight the commitment that we have to Parks and Recreation for people to enjoy.
Any questions for staff on this? The staff is asking us to approve the.
Yeah, we can actually do that within item 10G because it's within the overall budget.
Right.
If we're okay to go to the next one, will be the fourth quarter budget amendments and then approval of $4,000 transfer from Brownfield to the General Fund, which was supported at the Brownfield earlier this evening. But on the amendments which are in your pocket, again, it's a fourth quarter, and we, there's quite a number in our enterprise zones because that's when we're really targeted in the process. And our enterprise funds, not zones, enterprise funds are associated with Angels Crossing, Water and Sewer. I bring attention to the council on water. And it's actually the last page of that section in front of you, under the second item down, which is repairs and maintenance at $175,000. We're amending upward.
You got a minute.
Yep. So it'd be the last page, and it's 591-556. And just wanted to highlight that is related to the lead line replacements that weren't originally planned on Prairie Street when we discovered the water main in 92 wasn't hooked up, as well as the water main that, on Davis Street. And that was because there was no water main on Davis Street. So we had to complete that loop. So that's what has that number as large as it did. The one under it is related to the VAC truck repairs. But I wanted to at least draw $175,000 item while we're amending it.
So you're asking us to approve the amendment?
The listed amendments that are contained in the totality of, I didn't count them, but I bet you there's many pages. The document titled 2122 Fourth Quarter Budget Amendments Executive Summary.
Trustee Wagner, I move to approve the 2022, or 2021-2022 Fourth Quarter Budget Amendments as submitted.
Trustee Reister, second.
Motion made by Trustee Wagner, seconded by Trustee Reister. We'll do a roll call, please.
Trustee Wagner?
Yes.
Trustee Merrill?
Yes.
Trustee Reister?
Yes.
Trustee Olson?
Yes.
President Pro Tem Keller?
Yes.
President.
Yes. Motion carries.
The next motion I would ask from the council is to approve the movement of the administrative $4,000 from the Brownfield Fund to the General Fund for administrative expenses related to staff's involvement on Brownfield activities. So I'd ask for a motion and support and a roll call vote on the movement of that $4,000.
Move is supported. Move is submitted, sorry.
Trustee Wagner will support.
Motion married by Trustee Keller, seconded by Trustee Wagner. We'll do a roll call, please.
Trustee Wagner?
Yes.
Trustee Olson?
Yes.
Trustee Merrill?
Yes.
Trustee Reister?
Yes.
President Pro Tem Keller?
Yes.
President Brithby.
Yes. Motion carries. We want to do the Angels Crossing?
The next, nope, the, B and C, we incorporated into G.
Right.
We'd be down to 10D Resolution 0627-2022-02. Resolution to establish a flat rate quarterly charge to the utility invoices to address the water service lines impacted by the 2018 State of Michigan Safe Drinking Water Act, requiring municipalities to replace at minimum 5% per year. For, and it should read for the next 20, next 20 years. This resolution was sent to, the foundation of it is, as we're all aware, the state of Michigan has given local municipalities an unfunded mandate to, that requires us to do, if a water service line meets what would, would the, a lead service, we have to do a complete replacement at the village's investment. What staff feels is an area to proceed is to have this resolution, which creates a quarterly charge of $10 per meter equivalent to generate revenue that will assist in the village meeting this mandate by the state of Michigan. It will not cover the full expense. Right now, it was, I believe, give or take right around 80 that we have replaced so far. And we're looking at potentially 35 to 40 per year to ensure that we're replacing the amount that is required by the state, which will conduct its first audit, January 1st of 2025, I believe. We have submitted for a grant that the council approved for. We have not received word if we are getting that grant. And as always, we would use any grant monies first, but this will be a start in this requirement.
Jim, what was the percentage we have to do each?
Five, 5% each year, on average.
And Jim, this charge was per unit, not just per quarter, per meter, correct?
The charge would be $10 per quarter, per meter equivalent. So if an individual family residence would have one meter, it would not, it would not be for irrigation meters, to clarify. However, if it's an apartment structure that has one service line coming in, but has 10 apartments with inside it, it would be per each of those meter equivalents in RUs.
Jim, do we want to read the resolution and, I know it's three pages, about two and a half pages.
We can.
Do we have to?
Jim, real quick, how many, approximately how many homes in Vicksburg potentially are affected by this?
1,700, little over 1,700, I think we had meter equivalents. So we're looking at between $65,000 and $70,000 per year, which at $5,000 per service change, you can see where we're only looking at 14 or 15, and that's why I'm saying it's still short. There's our communities in Michigan under this requirement that are looking at 20, 30, 40% increases in their utility charges due to this. So.
Jim, real quick, too. If the federal government or the state, state government comes out with funding, being this is a resolution, we can always, if we get proper funding, just so that the residents understand, we can always do another resolution to take that quarterly charge off if we have funding available that covers.
Correct. That's why we're doing it versus implementing it into base rate increases and usage increases, that it's specific to the issue of service water lines that are impacted by the Safe Drinking Water Act. And to assure this council and citizens, we will be putting in for every opportunity from any entity on this issue.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that they understood, the citizens understand that this isn't going to be in perpetuity, that if funding does come through that covers it, then we can do, the council can pass a resolution to rescind that, so.
Correct.
Right.
Same as.
I can go ahead. If we're ready, I'll read it.
Fair enough.
So this will be policy and rate resolution 0627-2022-02, excuse me. A resolution to replace lead water line and establish a quarterly utility rate. Whereas the Village Council for the Village of Vicksburg is aware that there are an unknown number of lead water service lines and lead water service components, such as lead pigtails, goosenecks, and other fittings within the Village of Vicksburg's water service system, as it was a common practice to use lead lines and lead components in public and private water systems in the past. And whereas a number of the lead water service lines and lead components within the Village of Vicksburg are in portions of the village distribution system on public property, for which the village is responsible for their replacement, and a number of sections of service line are on private property, for which the owner of the property would normally be responsible for their replacement. And whereas the lead water. And whereas the lead water service lines and lead components within the village of Vicksburg's water service system, both public and private, are generally benign in place unless and until nearby portions of the system are disturbed, which can cause water lead levels to increase for a short period of time. And whereas the village of Vicksburg, when it locates lead components within the public portion of its water system, has a policy to replace the public property lead components, but not to do a full lead water service line replacement for the portion of lead service line which is on private property. And whereas a partial lead water service line replacement of the public property lead components can lead to an increase in lead levels released from the portion of lead service line that is on private property. And whereas pursuant to the Environment Protection Agency, full lead line, water service line replacement is generally effective in reliability achieving long-term reductions in drinking water lead levels and in preventing the increases in lead levels caused by partial lead water service line replacements. And whereas due to the enacted changes and requirements to the administrative rules under the Michigan Safe Drinking Water Act nineteen seventy-six PA Three Nine Nine as amended, and Villa, and the village council understanding that it is in the best interest of the health, safety, and welfare of its citizens for the village to perform full lead line service, line replacements instead of partial lead line service replacements. And whereas the state of Michigan has enacted legislative requirements that the village of Vicksburg fully fund this mandated program. Now therefore, be it resolved that the village council of, the village of Vicksburg hereby establishes a quarterly charge of $10 per utility billing REU and/or meter equivalent. And be it resolved that this revenue can only be invested in the replacement of full lead service line replacements. And be it resolved that this is a quarterly charge, that this quarterly charge will be canceled at the completion of all lead service line and components within the village of Vicksburg's water service system. And be it resolved that except in the case of an emergency repair, the village council of the village of Vicksburg hereby directs the village manager to require the Department of Public Works to perform lead line service replacements at public expense, both on the public property lines and the property, private property lines instead of partial lead line service replacement and up to ten feet beyond the meter where necessary, as determined by the director of public works or his or her designee. For purpose of implementation of this policy, the following rules apply. A, when conducting service line replacement, no portion of the service line consisting of lead or galvanized piping if connected to lead may remain in place. Replacement and notificat, B, replacement and notification requirement shall comply with the administrative rule R. Three twenty-five point one zero six zero four F, subparen five, and subparen six. C, full line, full lead service line replacement shall be conducted per American Waterworks Association C eight-one zero dash seventeen standard, in quotes, replacement and flushing of lead service line, end of quotes. The definition of service line means the pipe from the discharge of the corporation fitting to the customer site piping or to the building plumbing at the first shut-off valve inside the building or eighteen inches inside the building, whichever is shorter. E, the definitions of lead service line means either a service line which is made of lead or any lead pigtail, lead gooseneck, or other lead fitting that is connected to the service line or both. Be it further resolved that the lead service line in the village must be replaced regardless of lead action lo, levels, values at an average of five percent per year, not to exceed twenty years, until all such lines are replaced or at a rate not less than that otherwise directed by the state or federal government.
Thank you, Jim.
We, we estimate, um, give or take that there's approximately five hundred, give or take, uh, lines remaining in the village. As an example, uh, replacement that DPW's crew did last week, our records indicated it was a four-inch water main on that street. It's the first time that it had been dug out. Street goes multiple blocks and it's actually a two-inch from the early nineteen thirties.
This is what we face.
Question?
Jim, um, the grant that we're seeking, is that state or federal and how big a grant?
It's, uh, through Kalamazoo County. We submitted a request for one point two million dollars and within our request said that we would match the one point two million. If we were able to get that, um, the area that we felt, um, we, we could, um, it would be, I believe, a hundred and seven, between a hundred and a hundred and ten residences and focused, um, or north of the middle school. Okay. Thank you.
So if my math holds out, which I think it will, um, estimating the $10 a quarter for seventeen hundred REUs, across twenty years, that's the one, one point three million which we could match to hopefully that, the grant funding?
That's, that's a, that's a one-time charge. The one point two million, um, would, would, because of it being a, by the time, if we were awarded the grant, the timing would, would be within, um, two years that we'd turn dirt. So that would give us three years of this as part of the match, which is on round numbers, about two hundred thousand. Uh, we've secured another four hundred thousand from the federal government, um, still leaving us seven hundred thousand short. So that's built into other factors. This, this comes nowhere near paying what we're going to be required to pay. And though it very, um, difficult conversation to have because of how it can impact people on a financial sense, it's not tough when we know the consequences of leaving lead, water service lines like this in place, as well as these lines are coming up to one hundred years old. And in conversations, my analogy that I've used, and we've put some pictures on the website, we're, part of this budget also has some updates to the website, mainly focused on the DDA and, uh, the infrastructure underground, is if we, we had potholes on our roadways, like we have concerns underground, we would hear every day from our citizens that we need to address it. But unfortunately, the reality is, none of us see the conditions underground. We know they're there because the village received a million-dollar grant a few years ago and we videotaped our entire system and prioritized the criticality of it. And we're gonna have, um, more pictures and explanations of what people are looking at on our website. Uh, but it, but if you could imagine your roads being just filled with potholes, we could answer, well, you can continue to drive on them. It's not that bad. And that's, in some sections, just like last week, um, Randy called me over to look in the ground. And, and that's just kind, what we're dealing with, where you have, um, institutional knowledge that was always told one thing was under that ground and we opened it up for the first time and that's not what's there.
Yeah, so my comment's really getting to the heart of trying to balance doing the best job that we can for our citizens and getting that replaced, but being mindful of the financial impact to everybody that we're serving, so...
Correct. It's, it, it predictably in, in Michigan municipalities, this will be on the forefront for the next eighteen years because we're all, especially, yeah, for, that's, it has eighteen more years. Uh, we're above ten percent replacement right now, but...
What is the penalty if we don't do it? Is there a penalty?
Well, the state could come in and, yeah.
Well, we're hit with a, a double whammy, right? We have aged-out, uh, infrastructure and then we have the lead lines that are causing so much concern, so we're trying to do it all at the same time. So we have a request by staff in front of us to, uh, approve a, establish a flat rate quarterly charge to the utility invoices. With the desire of this council.
Trustee Wagner, I move to support the policy and rate resolution zero six, two seven, two zero, two two, dash, zero two. A resolution to replace lead water line and establish quarterly utility rates.
Trustee Reister, support.
Motion made by trustee Wagner, support by trustee Reister. We'll do a roll call, please.
Trustee Olton?
Yes.
Trustee Reister?
Yes.
Trustee Merrill?
Yes.
Trustee Wagner?
Yes.
President Pro Tim Keller?
Yes.
President Frisby?
Yes. Yeah, sitting in front of you as your council, it's, it's a difficult to deal with, but, you know, we all pay the same as who we represent, so... I just ask one thing of the staff coming out of this. Please draft a letter to send to all the residents, taxpaying residents before they get their bill. Could we do that?
Yeah, we'll include that. We did it last year, um, and we'll include that. In fact, we can include it here in a couple of weeks. It won't be impacted. The bill that goes out next actually covers the last three months of the fiscal year we're in. So the first bill that tonight's budget, um, as well as this resolution, um, will be in the October. But I can, um, have the letter drafted and make sure that it's inserted and sent out with this very next invoice here in the next, I think it's about the next ten days, uh, that'll be mailed out.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Um, just to add to all this, I think everybody needs to be aware, everybody's heard of Flint. Everybody knows about Flint, Michigan. And their problems occurred when they switched their water source from the Detroit source to their local source in Flint. And when it did, it caused problems because the pipes, the, the water pressure changed or their, whatever, and it caused issues in the pipes to start leaching into the water. What we talked about in the resolution was that the village is going to change out the public parts of the system. And they could do that and, and not do anything with the, with the private, but because of the mandate from the state, they're doing all of it. Because if they only did the, the public part of it, we would have a Flint, Michigan here in Vicksburg. We would have homes contaminated, so, um, and I know we've been upfront about this, but just so everybody understands, that's, this is what is really going on, so...
On that, uh, note, Mr. Frisby, about the letter, that's part of what we're looking at having a section of the website dedicated to this issue with a, with, um, I, a lot more pictures and videos of what is underground. And people can see what, we're trying to do a predictive analysis of the criticality of, in any of our investments, are looking at these areas first and foremost. And also, right now, uh, we cannot get federal money through the USDA for lead line replacement. That is an ineligible criteria. That might change. It's, I think many municipalities are hopeful that opportunity will be out there in the future.
Excuse me. Yeah, just put up that, uh, map that, uh, was it Prynn and Newhoff did with all the red, on all the lines in red and yellow. There's, there's a lot of it in our community. So we have, uh, an approval and passed a resolution for the flat rate. What do we have next, Jim?
The next will be, uh, to open the public hearing on the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three fiscal year budget. Um, it will take a motion and support.
Yeah, entertain a motion to open.
Correct.
So moved.
Trustee Wagner, I support.
We'll do, um, motion made by trustee Keller, motion seconded by trustee Wagner. We'll do a roll call. To open the public hearing.
Trustee Merrill?
Yes.
Trustee Olton?
Yes.
Trustee Reister?
Yes.
Trustee Wagner?
Yes.
President Pro Tim Keller?
Yes.
President Frisby?
Yes. So we have moved into a, uh, public time, public hearing. Jim, did you want to speak to the budget of?
Um, certainly can. It's, uh, highlights, uh, for the fiscal year, total general fund revenues we estimate to increase to one point, one million eight hundred thirty-nine thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, associated expenditures at one million six hundred and fourteen, six hundred and fourteen thousand five hundred and six dollars. Um, that, uh, we think there'll be a continued leveling off of the local community stabilization share, which used to be the, uh, state personal property tax. Uh, the budget still has, uh, as its priority, a commitment to financial transparency with the continuation of the, uh, financial transparency data on the website. Uh, community calendars, uh, with village clerk on, on board, I, I think is, uh, showing improvements with outreach to, to organizations to have their events put up. Continued live streaming of all governmental meetings, uh, chi, uh, archiving the meetings on our website as well as on YouTube so people can, can view historically. And inmar, embarking on a complete master plan update which will involve public input unlike, uh, ever before in Vicksburg. There is an overall, um, um, and it should read, uh, or, you know, a very slight increase in pension contributions, um, to the employees' retirement system. The village moved to a defined, moved from a defined benefit plan to a defined contribution plan in two thousand eighteen. And we're starting to see some of the, uh, positive impacts towards the village as, as the future anticipated liabilities are being reduced. We are right now predicting that all the future liabilities will be eliminated by twenty thirty-six. So, so that's a very good thing. We were supposed to get a, uh, the report from Mears last week. It hasn't arrived yet. So at the next council meeting, I'll be able to present spec, where we're on track per their, their reporting. Has a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars of new pavement, uh, well, of improved pavement. Some of it is, is the, uh, tar and overlays. It's chip seal. Uh, as we talked about earlier, a hundred and thirty-eight thousand seven hundred committed to the Parks Department. Continuation of the goose roundup egg collection upon the weed, uh, uh, treatment programs where we pay for the two properties, uh, that, that we have on the lake. Continuation of a fully-staffed twenty-four-hour, seven-day-a-week police department focused on, uh, while service based on procedural justice mindset. It'll include youth activities. Uh, we discuss those, uh, opportunities through the library, reading to kids as well as, uh, kickball with cops, uh, for the Vicksburg youth. Continuation of the school resource officer in partnership with the Vicksburg Community Schools. And increasing the total amount of facade, of what traditionally was the facade grant program by over twenty-five percent for businesses within the DDA district, which this is a restructured grant program. It expands it to include public benefit as well as facades with awards of fifteen thousand dollars for one, seventy-five hundred dollars for two, and three thousand dollars for two, uh, businesses. And we just talked about the water valve or lead line replacement program that will continue on. It's, I feel, a budget that is extremely conservative, but yet still delivers the services to our citizens and visitors and continues Vicksburg in a very progressive, positive direction in the future, so. I don't see any citizens on our hybrid Zoom, but we'll need to give the opportunity for to receive citizen comments and then member comments. Prior to closing, I will let the council know that we did not have any inquiries on the budget from citizens or letters. We did not receive any. This was publicly noticed through, through MLive 15 days ago and, and noticed within the public. And we've discussed it, I think, at multiple council meetings that were leading to June 27th.
I for one appreciate all the preliminary work that was done to get to this point. If you spoke much to the master plan update, just in there that we chose McKenna, is it not in the? We've, we've worked with them in the past, I believe Carl, when he was on the planning commission was part of it, I know I was when I was on it. And they bring a lot of experience with them, and they already have a sense of who we are and what we are and what we want. So I think that's a good choice. Any questions that are?
Before member comments, if you'll just open it up to receive citizen comments?
Yes, indeed. So any citizen who would like to speak or comment on this budget, please do so now. I think at the bottom of the Zoom, you just move your cursor down there and a little handle pop up if you so choose.
Do not see anyone indicating they wish to speak. I think we can progress to member comments before closing.
Yes.
Public hearing.
President Frisby, if I could?
Yes, sir.
Jim, just one question, just because I forgot to do my math ahead of time. Did you have a top level for total proposed revenues versus proposed expenses for this budget?
You're talking about for all the departments and funds? Yes, sir. Estimated revenues are 7,370,050 dollars. And the expenses anticipated are 5,878,506 dollars, which the net is a positive 1,491,544
Thank you, Jim. Yeah, I just wanted to highlight that for anyone listening that, I mean, that's a well-presented budget that gives us a lot of room to, to work throughout the year. Well, hopefully.
President Frisby?
Yes, sir.
To tack onto that, we lowered the tax rate in the village a few years ago, and we've increased revenue and we've kept expenses down. And we have not had to raise taxes, which I think is a testament to not only the council, but especially the staff. And the money that is set aside, I guess, right now, we, we've earmarked for different items so that we don't have to go out and get a special assessment, like if we have to get a new vac truck or, or whatever. So this does put us on a very outstanding financial footing, because who knows what the next year or two is going to bring financially for all municipalities, so. Mike, congrats to the staff for putting this together.
Thank you.
Julie, any questions?
No questions, but thank you for all your hard work and everybody's group efforts. Thank you.
Trustee Reister?
Well, I just appreciate the fiscal responsibility. I believe personally in living within a budget, and so I'm happy to know that the village is living within their budget, so thank you.
Trustee Olson?
I guess we're the Dave Ramsey of Michigan, so thank you.
And thank you, trustee Wagner, for pointing that out. I was going through the numbers in my head and did not see one that we're spending more than we're getting in any of the line item budgets, so that's a very, very positive move. And thank you, Carl, for bringing up the fact that we did reduce the tax almost by a full half mil on three years ago, so that was something I didn't get a lot of publicity, I'll say that, but I defy you to tell me of another municipality has done that in the last 10 years, so. And myself, thank you, staff, thank you, Jim. Christian, carry on. So we'll, with that, we'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by President Pro Tim Keller, supported by trustee Wagner. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Public meeting is closed.
On item G, it would be the resolution, the motion support and approval of the proposed 22-23 fiscal year budget contained in resolution zero six two seven two zero two two dash zero one.
So we have a budget in front of us, staff is asking us for our consideration and approval.
Would, would you like me, if so, I'll, I'll go ahead and read the resolution?
Thank you, Jim.
Whereas the village council has reviewed the requests for funding, the necessary projects and programs of the village for 2022 and 2023, and whereas it has determined the following activity level budget action plan for 2022-2023 should be adopted. And whereas the Village of Vicksburg tax levy for the 2022-2023 fiscal year to support the operating budget includes a property tax rate that will remain the same at one, at 15.163 mils. And whereas the SAW grant has been completed with an extensive evaluation of the Village of Vicksburg's infrastructure, and as a result, it, it should read, Mr. Frisby, the 2022-2023 consumption rates will have a slight increase based on the recommendation of our financial team. The slight increase is needed to ensure that there is enough revenue to cover anticipated maintenance and upgrades to an aging system that dates to the 1940s. And whereas the state of Michigan has enacted legislation requiring municipalities to upgrade any lead water service line. The village estimates that there are 475 to 500 locations that will be required to be upgraded over the next 18 years. The state mandates that at minimum 5% of the water lines are replaced per year for the next 20 years, and the village has established a quarterly lead line replacement charge of $10 per quarter per utility user, our U meter equivalent contained in resolution zero six two seven two zero two two dash zero two. And whereas the cost of treatment of wastewater has increased over 10% in 2022. And whereas the average homeowner, the slight increase in base and consumption rate, sewer at 3% and water at 4%, will keep the Village of Vicksburg in the medium range for utility rates for similar-sized municipalities. And whereas this will continue to ensure that the Village of Vicksburg will be able to provide adequate capacity and infrastructure to our residents, businesses, and visitors in future years. The following list illustrates the quarterly utility rates utilized in the budget. And whereas the 2022-2023 activity level budget will continue, a conservative fiscal approach that utilizes previously assigned and committed dollars for CIP investments. The 2022-2023 activity level budget will be reviewed and updated at public village council meetings every three months, beginning in October 2022. And whereas the 2022-2023 activity level budget supports the Village of Vicksburg's master plan, parks and recreation plan, downtown development plan, current village council president and trustees, subunits of government, and citizens input via four public Zoom meetings that over 40 citizens participated in. And now, therefore, be it resolved by the village council of the Village of Vicksburg, that the attached activity level budget by department be adopted for 2022-2023. And it lists out each of the funds, proposed revenues, and proposed expenditures. Concluding with and, be it further resolved, that a duly noticed public hearing was held on the adoption of the 22-23 operating activity level budget at 7:00 PM Monday, June 27th, 2022, which provide an opportunity for citizens to have input in person or via hybrid remote Zoom platform. And we'd need a motion support in a roll call vote on the council's desire on the presented budget.
So we have a request by the staff to approve of the 2022-2023 full year budget. What is this council's desire?
Trustee Wagner, I move to accept resolution zero six dash two seven two zero two two dash zero one. The resolution establishing 2022-2023 Village of Vicksburg operating budget.
Reister, support.
Motion made by trustee Wagner, support by trustee Reister. We'll do a roll call, please, Christian.
Trustee Wagner?
Yes.
Trustee Merrill?
Yes.
Trustee Olson?
Yes.
Trustee Reister?
Yes.
President Pro Tim Keller?
Yes.
President Frisby?
Yes. Motion passes for one more year. So we have a manager's report?
Well, the last item we added was 10H, and that is, we're looking for a motion support in a roll call vote on staff's recommendation to enter a contractual agreement with McKenna for their proposal to prepare the master plan update. The total was $16,000. It has some additional services that we can evaluate as we go through the year. There, as President Frisby spoke, they've done work with the Village of Vicksburg, done work with many municipalities. Within our request, when we, we put this RFP out, was heavily focused on community engagement and input with both in-person and remote style avenues, so our citizens can have input on the future of the Village of Vicksburg. But staff's recommendation is to approve the village manager to enter into the contractual relationship with McKenna on a complete update of our master plan.
Any questions about the master plan update, or?
Just one question. After, if we approve the proposal for McKenna, will we be getting a timeline for that process afterwards?
Yeah, I'll ask them to come to the next council meeting, which is the third week of July, and provide kind of the roadmap as this will be a multi, throughout the fiscal year, I envision taking the majority of the fiscal year before we present the final product to be adopted.
Yeah, very good. I, having had it from the finance packet, I think it's a very comprehensive plan, and I think they are going to be a good fit for the village's master plan update.
President Frisby, as you had mentioned, I was on the planning commission when we did the master plan in 2015, and McKenna did it, and they were, they were very excellent to work with, so I'm glad that they're going to be back. As they, as you said, they know us, so.
Any other questions for staff? Well, hearing none, we have a request in front of us to add to the 2023-22-23 budget, $26,000 for the master plan completion. And the staff is recommending McKenna be awarded this. What are the council's desires?
President Frisby, so moved.
Trustee Wagner, I'll support.
Motion made by President Pro Tim Keller, support by trustee Wagner. We'll do a roll call, please, Christian.
Trustee Olson?
Yes.
Trustee Reister?
Yes.
Trustee Wagner?
Yes.
Trustee Merrill?
Yes.
President Pro Tim Keller?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Now we'll move on to the manager's update.
Yeah, the only update, really, and I'm available to answer any questions that I have, is the DPW building, which we had portions of the garage doors delivered today, so framing of the restroom has to be completed. Last week, they did get the insulation in, so it's, it's moving forward, but that's where we are with that.
How did the drains work during the last heavy rain we had?
Good.
Yeah?
Yeah. Cutters are up and, so, yeah.
Good to hear when a plan comes together. Good. I think through the evening, Jim has updated us on a lot of other things about town. Is any other questions for Jim while we're here? Well, hearing none, we'll move on to committee reports. Is there any update on the tree committee?
No. No.
I don't believe there was Parks and Rec. The CATS meeting is next, this coming Thursday with the planning commission, and Rick is not here. Was there any meeting updates? There was not last week, was there?
No, their meeting will be the second week in July. We are, have meetings with staff involved on a possible development this Thursday, or this Wednesday.
Oh, right.
So hopefully we can present that. So hopefully we can, uh, present that to the planning commission, uh, the second week of, uh, July.
And I had a meeting all by myself with the sewer. It was not last Tuesday, it is tomorrow, so. And I was, I was a week early, better early than late. South County Fire, there was, any, no updates?
No report.
No report. All right, this takes us to time to, uh, citizens' comments for any, any non-agenda item, anything they'd like to speak about. If there's anyone on the Zoom call that would like to speak, now's the time. Again, if you just move your cursor down to the bottom of the page, a handle pop up. Well, seeing none, we'll, uh, assume there are no comments. That'll move us to, uh, trustees' time. Let's start with, uh, trustee Merrill.
I was taking a walk through Clark Park and I was weeding the new bedding plants that we put in that were transferred, and a young gentleman from the village came to help me, who's 13 years old. His name was Carson Step, and, um, I just appreciated a young 13-year-old kid coming up. I said, "I can't believe you're helping with this." And he loves to do landscaping, so I just thought it was really cool. So, there we go.
Thank you for that, young man. But trustee Olson?
I made the trip over to Hartford this weekend, uh, or Friday, uh, to talk with the Historical Society, and they're getting the roof repaired and everything else. They're, they raised about $4,600 out of $10,000. And I thank God that that storm didn't hit us because Red Arrow Highway had 60, 70-foot high trees across it. There were roots, uh, trees laying on their side with their roots as big as this table area. And there is a house over there. If you look real close, you can see the house under all the trees. So I thank God that that storm didn't hit us, so, thank you.
Trustee Wagner?
I think I've talked plenty tonight. I'm all set, thank you.
Trustee Reister?
Well, I just want to add one positive note as far as replacing lines. One of the positive things that comes out of that, because we had to replace our line from the street into our house, and the water pressure before and after was so dramatic. So, I mean, the cost of it is really, really high, but the results of it is really wonderful. So, um, I think that people will be very happy to have these new lines in once they're in.
But you paid for that yourself.
Yes, I did.
Unfortunate or fortunate? I'm, I'm not sure. I didn't have anything really to say tonight, other than thanks to the staff for all the budget work that you've done and hours you've put in and, but. Oh, Carl.
I'll take my bomb bag, go home. I had to have my water line replaced years ago and, and it was a dramatic difference. Just real quick, one, that, uh, the public needs to know that during the budget process, there's a lot of heavy lifting that goes on, you know, staff especially, but also members of this council. And we meet just about every Monday during the month of June, so, um, thank you very much to all you, all you've done to get this prepped and ready to go and, and for everybody that was on the finance committee to, to make this happen, so just thank you for everybody.
And that was the only, thank you. Thank you, sir. I'm glad you showed up. But there is a lot that goes on behind the scenes, so if you're just watching this for the first time tonight, that we've had the last five meetings that we've gone over this line item by line, I'm pretty detailed, so. And my thanks also to the finance committee and everybody that put in time and effort to do this, so. With that, I'll, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
We have a second?
Support.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.